I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Velasquez, if you would call in.
Arnold Honigton. Kimberly Jackson.
Present.
Ryan Fulton.
Present.
Julia Swiggen.
Present.
Marie Davis.
Present.
Renee James.
I'm here.
Edward Canuti.
Here.
Charlie McCallum.
Here.
Board members present.
Thank you. Any additions or deletions?
Good afternoon. Jeff Gagnon playing his own administrator. With the absence of a few of our board members tonight, may I ask that Ms. Jackson first, ultimately also have voting rights?
Hearing no opposition, Ms. Jackson has voting rights.
Thank you, sir. There are no additions or deletions to Ted's agenda.
Members, any disclosures? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as printed?
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Ms. Davis, second by Mr. Canuti. Seeing no opposition, show the agenda adopted. Approval of the minutes from September 11th. Is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Canuti. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Canuti, second by Mrs. Jackson. Seeing no opposition, show the minutes adopted. Moving down to new business. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Mr. Gagnon, is there any, uh, would there be an issue if we switch the order? Being that we have applicants and it seems like our language is pretty lengthy and I don't know if you have a presentation for our, for the ordinance for the telecommunications regulations language? Or should we take the applicants first?
Um, it would be, they asked preference to keep the agenda as provided, however the board has discretion to change or...
Hearing none, we'll go with staff's recommendation. You have the floor for the presentation.
Thank you, sir. Once again, Jeff Gagnon playing his own administrator. Under new business tonight, we have multiple levels. Letter A, we have been working with Mr. Keith Davis, Esquire of Corbett Whiten Davis. He's with us tonight and he will provide us with a presentation on telecommunications language. I'll read this into the record just because it's lengthy. I'll be quick about it, but I want to make sure that's in the record. So, under new business, letter A, it's a review of an ordinance permitting Chapter 10, licenses and business regulations. Article 6 telecommunications regulations. Telecommunications regulations of the city's code ordinances by renaming Article 6, placement and maintenance of facilities for communication services in right-of-way, updating definitions and performance with state law, providing for wireless communications facilities, updating and revising the registration and permitting process, requiring designed features for certain above-ground facilities, providing placement parameters for wireless telecommunications facilities in residential right-of-way, revising administration and enforcement procedures, providing regulations for pass-through providers in accordance with state law, providing for conflicts, separability and co-ification, and providing an effective date. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Keith Davis to court.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, Mr. Chair and board members. My name is Keith Davis. I've been retained by the city as special counsel to work on this telecommunications ordinance and update your code in this, in this part of your ordinances. It's the lengthy title, but I, I probably will be pretty good to give you the essence of what we're doing here. Earlier in the year, the city council adopted a moratorium on accepting and processing applications for the use of the city's right-of-way by telecommunication service providers. The motivation behind this basically is that the change in the state of the art telecommunications is a growing and changing field and when our, when your ordinances and many cities' ordinances were written, they contemplated use of the right-of-way by, you know, placement of what you typically think of as telephone poles with the wires connecting the telephone poles going along the right-of-way. And then wireless facilities being located on what you typically know as the big cell towers that are located on private property here in the area, in different places. The technology is changing so that what we're beginning to see are applications for the placement of wireless facilities in right-of-way, which are essentially mini cellular antennas going in the right-of-way that are completely wireless. It's basically either its own pole with an antenna on top or it's the antenna facility co-located on an existing pole. But the wires that we typically see are not necessarily what's going in. So what that does is it, it kind of expands the right-of-way where these things can go. And what they're designed to do, by my understanding, is they sort of fill in the gaps where cellular and other service might be sketchy, for example, in certain residential neighborhoods. So, as applications start coming in for these wireless facilities, the city hit the pause button, so to speak, enacted the moratorium, directed staff to look at its existing code, determine how best to update the ordinance to protect the city's right-of-way and city's residents from a proliferation of this type of thing and right-of-way throughout the city. The trick is that federal and state law require that all telecommunication service providers be treated in a nondiscriminatory, basically on the same playing field. So someone who comes in who wants to put in a wireless facility, and you've got several applications pending, has to be treated in basically the same way as traditional providers that still use wires and telephone poles. So it's a little tricky in drafting code that doesn't violate the federal and state nondiscrimination requirements for how these people are treated and still protect our right-of-way and not allow proliferation of wireless poles that go up in front of everybody's house in all your residential zones. Some other things that changed with the Telecommunications Act is the only way you derive revenue now is through your communication service tax. The code used to have provision for a collection of revenue from all the telecommunication providers that put things in your right-of-way. And so that was old code. So what we did when we went in, looked at your ordinance, updated all the definitions so that they're in conformance with state law and federal law. We took out all of the antiquated code that had to do with collecting revenue from service providers, which you can't do and you haven't been doing for many years, quite honestly. But the language just never got repealed out of the ordinances. So we repealed all of that old code. What the law allows is the city to require any provider to register with the city. And you have a registration process in your code right now. We updated that. So before anybody can come in and apply for a permit to put anything in your right-of-way, they have to register with the city, basically tell you, you know, who they are, what they do, give you ensure, proof of insurance, points of contact, all of that sort of thing. And a lot of that was already in your code. One of the things that we added, because, you know, it is contemplated that there will be more facilities going in your right-of-way, it would be helpful for staff to know what's already there. So one of the things that was added in the proposed ordinance is that with registration and registration renewal, provision of a general inventory of what the providers have already got in the city. And that helps staff understand, well, you've already got things here, can we co-locate? Do you really need it here? Can it go there? That type of thing. So that's a new piece to the registration requirement. Registration is required prior to any use of your right-of-way and it's also required to be renewed every other year. So that any change in the applicant circumstances can be updated and any change in what facilities they put in your right-of-way can be, can be updated. The registration process requires a security fund, which basically is a performance bond of sorts it requires. You currently have this in your code at $25,000. One of the changes we've made is to make it $50,000 and it basically guarantees the performance of the service provider and all the obligations that are put upon them by your, by your right-of-way code.
Pardon me, Mr. Davis. Does that apply to, to each application or is it each service point where there's a...
Well, it's sort of a two-step process. So if there's a telecommunication service provider that wants to put something in your right-of-way, some facility, they have to register with the city. Once they're registered and you tell them you've registered, you've given us everything you want, step two is then they have to actually apply for the building permits to put the things in where they want to go. So registration basically gives them permission and the ability to then go and apply for the permits to put what they want to put in. Did that answer your question?
Yes, no.
Okay.
I guess, suppose they had multiple locations within the city or multiple right-of-ways, is that a new registration for each?
No, the registration is a one-time and then renewal every other year. So that, that way the city knows everyone who is doing something in some right-of-way in the city. Once that happens though, everything that they want to put in, regardless of which right-of-way, they'd have to apply for a permit. So sort of step two is where you get the detailed permit applications and you know exactly what's going in everywhere. Step one just tells you who wants to put something somewhere in the city. Okay, let's see. So we updated the permitting requirements, talking about the building permits that have to be applied for. And one of the main changes to the ordinance that we did, that's found in this part of the ordinance, we encourage, the language would encourage undergrounding where it's possible. It's not always possible with these wireless facilities, however, it encourages it where it can be done. We added language that requires new facilities to be designed so that they're designed in a stealth manner, so that we try to make them blend with their surroundings. The goal there is to minimize the visual impact that new facilities will have on, on the adjacent property. We've limited the maximum height that any new facilities can, can be. We've limited the types of right-of-way that new facilities can go in. So in your code, you've got a whole list of different kinds of right-of-way, major arterial roads, minor arterial roads, neighborhood roads. And what we've said is we want to try and direct all of these things to your larger right-of-way in the more commercial and industrial areas and try and keep them out of the residential zones. There's language in there that puts the burden on the applicant in a situation where they say, well, we really need to go into one of your smaller right-of-way. It puts the burden on them to justify their reasoning and why they have to do that in order to truly serve the customers that they claim are not being served. So there's a process in the code, but the direction is to try and steer them away from those residential neighborhoods.
Excuse me, I do have one question regarding the residential neighborhoods. If, does the neighbor or does the, um, the property most directly affected, the owner have notification that there's going to be a big pole in front of their house or do they have any say-so at all?
Well, the way we wrote this, it would prohibit the pole from going right in front of their house altogether. We had gone back and forth and discussed different types of notice requirements. The way this document is written right now, that is not in there. Instead, we went the direction of really saying it can't be in front of a house, it can't obstruct a view from a, from a residential property. If, if there's language that says if there are residential properties on one side of the street and not the other, they have to go on the other side of the street. That was the way it was drafted at this time. But this, so there is no, there is no specific notice provision related directly to one of these proponents that's written into this ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Again, we encourage co-location and then there is also a, a new provision that we put into this ordinance that would allow an applicant to ask for a waiver from any of the technical requirements. It's a fairly dangerous and burdensome application process. It requires the applicant to really show why they need to deviate from whatever the requirement is that they're asking to deviate, the height requirement, the, their spacing requirements, so that you can only have so many poles or so many of the ground equipment boxes. It's limited to, I think, two within a thousand feet of each other, within a thousand-foot radius. So, point is that there are, the applicant has the opportunity to ask for a waiver and that's handled administratively, as this is written, but they really have to establish a true need for that.
Is there a criteria for it?
There are very detailed criteria, actually.
I see it on page 23 and 24, the criteria for the waiver. However, a question that I have, um, what's the cost for the waiver? Because I didn't see that, that was...
Very good.
Is there a cost that has been established for the waiver?
There will be application fees and processing fees that will be set, that will be set by resolution of the city council. So the actual dollars haven't been set yet, but the ordinance does contemplate that, you know, the city's out-of-pocket expenses for processing all of these things will be passed through to the applicant. But staff, we're going to have to determine based on what kind of fees and charges the city imposes for similar processing and that will have to be added into a fee schedule, but it is contemplated in the ordinance. We don't, we didn't think it was appropriate to put it in the ordinance itself because it's easier to change.
Right, because costs change, that's right. Well, I guess a question that, and I kind of suspected that was one of the reasons why it wasn't indicated in the ordinance. But, um, one of the last caveats in the waiver section talked about the city manager and their ability in granting these waivers. Why is it that, uh, is there any specific reason why it's solely designated to the city manager? Is there, you know, maybe another qualified person that could have input? Because, you know, I, I think the city manager has a job of running the city. I'm not sure if she's exactly, and I'm not, by no means discounting her ability, but is that something that can, you know, be done by a board, a council, or even the city council, perhaps?
I mean, at the discretion of, there's, no, there's nothing magical about it having to be the manager or the manager's designee. If, if the city felt it was more appropriate for a different person or a different department to handle that, that, that can be, that can be done at your discretion. So no, it does not have to be the manager.
Well, I guess my thoughts was similar to what we have today. We have special exceptions and we know that's a pretty extensive process and it's, there are rules and, you know, goes before planning is on the board. And I'm not suggesting that should be the case. I'm just curious what kind of led to that decision.
There were other places in your existing ordinance that I think directed certain things to the city manager or designee, so it was just, it was just tracked that way. But as I say, there's nothing magical about it having to be the city manager.
Okay, fair.
And then, so the last thing that we did with this ordinance is really just to reorganize all the administrative and enforcement pieces, which, you know, you'll notice that there were a number of things stricken. However, you'll see that they were actually just moved to the end of the ordinance with administrative pieces. So the only things that were truly deleted out of the code and as opposed to being stricken and moved to another place was the language that had to do with the revenue, the revenue sharing, the, the payment of those fees to the city that's no longer allowed by state laws. That came out. Most of everything else simply got re-eranged and then we had the addition of the new code that I just explained to you. So that in a nutshell is what we're proposing to do here and that's why we're proposing to do it. I'd be happy to ask and answer any other questions you may have.
I have a couple.
Ms. Davis, your acknowledgement.
I'm sorry, who is it besides the waiver that's administratively?
Yes, ma'am.
And who, who does that? I mean, is that...
As it's written right now, it goes to the city manager. It would be the manager or the manager's designee. So the way it's written, the manager would designate some other person to do that. It's written that the manager or the manager's designee.
Okay, on page 15, regarding, in case of an emergency, the city commences repairs without prior notice to the registrant.
Yes. And that's actually...
That doesn't seem quite fair.
You're writing in the middle of the page, are you?
Oh, let's see, under B?
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Sixth line, under B.
Yes, in the case of an emergency, the city may commence repairs without prior notice to the registrant. Emergency will mean a condition that may affect the public health, safety, or welfare.
But it doesn't really...
Yeah, that's actually, that's actually in your code right now. That's actually not even the language.
Don't you think an owner should be notified? It doesn't say that they're going to be notified unless it's someplace else. There's no qualification, I mean, there's no requirement for notification at all.
There would be no problem with putting some language in there that indicates that the city would notify the, notify the owner as soon as is reasonably possible. I don't, it would not be my recommendation to put something in there that would delay the need, if there was a need for immediate action, it wouldn't be my recommendation to put something in there that delays that and would jeopardize, if it was public health, safety, welfare. If it truly was an emergency, I mean, this is meant to be, the obvious example is, you know, post-weather disaster type of thing and something falls into the, you know, middle of the street and we need to move it right away. That, that's the most obvious example that comes to my mind. So I certainly don't see a problem with some notification that doesn't delay the city's ability to take the emergency action that it needs.
Oh, I agree, but I mean, I think they should say that you notify them immediately and then you, someone determines what immediate is. If you don't have communications, you can't, maybe can't do it for three or four days, but there's no requirement in here about notification at all. I understand the prior, the issue of prior.
Well, there would be, that's, I don't see any problem with adding some language that addresses your company's concern there at all.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any other members?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Mr. Davis, who enforces this in the city? Will it be code enforcement? Will it be community development? I mean, there's, it's a, it's a complex set of rules.
Probably would not be, well, this is, this is city property. It's not, in my view, it's not really a code enforcement scenario because the violation, any violation would be on city property. It's not as though you would notify a property owner that they're in violation of something. Depending on your internal workings, I would imagine it would be, you know, building department, your community development department, public works, whoever's responsible for your right-of-way if you don't want to enforce it. No, I don't think it would be necessarily...
Shouldn't, shouldn't we incorporate that and identify who is going to be the enforcement agency that will be responsible for making this all happen? Otherwise, it gets floundered around in different departments, whether it's the utility department, public works, engineering, whoever. But I think there should be some provision in here that states who's the, who will be responsible.
I certainly have no objection to adding language along those lines. We could, that would just be a matter of having city staff explain what the mechanics would be and adding, we could put that right into the back of the ordinance without any trouble at all.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think it's important so that, you know, it's identified upfront. Which I guess the second part of that responsibility is who's responsible for, in the case of the fines, who's responsible for, that same agency must be responsible then, or should be responsible, for issuing the fines, collecting the fines, and so forth.
Sure.
So I think some kind of clarification to that.
If I may, Mr. Canuti.
Hello.
I found that historically with sections of the code, different departments are referred to. A good example would be the CDEC division, which no longer exists. So there's current sections of the code that say that CDEC is responsible for X, Y, Z task. And we know who is basically responsible now, even though that department was disbanded. I would be afraid that after five or 10 years, potentially departmental roles can be shifted. And as it's written now, I think it falls under the purview of the city manager and ultimately she has the executive power to move responsibilities associated with implementing or enforcing the code to any designee that she or he seems fit.
But don't you have, you basically have the same moving target, whether it's the city manager or you say it's the X, Y, Z department in the ordinance. I mean, things are going to change. You're going to get a new city manager, they're going to appoint different designees and so forth. So I'm just, all I'm saying is by clarifying this part of it, you know, we, we at least assign somebody the responsibility.
I do understand what you're saying. I guess that if it remains city manager and designee, that over time it won't be updated. It'll stay current in matter who's actually delegated the respective responsibilities.
Yeah, not to belabor the point, but I mean, we're going to always have the public works and we're always going to have a utility department and we're always going to have an engineering department. And someday we may not have a city manager, you know, who knows?
Maybe. Maybe it's for department change also, so it's just linguistics at this point, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, just one question, just a personal curiosity. We're talking primarily about wireless communication facilities. And in here somewhere, I can't remember exactly where, it says that we're measuring it per linear mile. How are we measuring wireless per linear mile?
So that is under the pass-through provider section at the very end of the ordinance.
Right.
And this is a provision that comes right out of state law. Because, because my understanding, the way that, the way that these wireless facilities work, you'd have your right-of-way and you'd have a pole here and another antenna over there. And they're, they are still connected underground with fiber optic or whatever the cable is. So you don't see the wires hanging above ground, but those antennas are still connected to each other with underground cable. And then what happens with a pass-through provider is simply someone that does not remit the communication service tax that, that other providers remit. So this is the mechanism that the state came up with to allow local government to capture limited revenue from those type of providers and that, that's how it's done.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions.
Any other members?
I have a couple.
Ms. Brooks?
Yes. I know we're talking about wireless cellphone tower, but aren't those, they're different types of towers, correct? Different heights, different...
You know, your traditional, what you traditionally think of as a cell tower is not this.
Okay.
These are more like, dedicate, if it's its own, if it's its own pole and antenna, it's sort of like its own dedicated, I'll just use the term telephone pole because that's something that everybody understands. But it's, it's a pole about that size and then it's got a device or an antenna on top of it. And that's, that's what... it's got a device or an antenna on top of it, and that's, that's what sits in the right-of-way. It's not the typical cell tower that you think of, it's that great big thing with antennas all around it. That's not this. These are micro cell towers. They're much smaller, they're more compact, and they're, they're just a pole that fits in the right-of-way. And this is, this is the evolving state of the art that companies are starting to come, they started in Miami-Dade, and they're kind of working their way north, and you see, you're starting to see more and more of these in right-of-ways, so.
Is there an image that you can show us? Do we have anything that, no, is there?
We actually have some folks here from a company named Crown Castle, which is the company that has applications that were pending, sort of got this whole moratorium started. They may be able to give you some better physical description of what those look like, that are better than my verbal description.
Any other members with a question while we're waiting on that?
I guess I can have a question.
One second, Ms. Davis. Mr. Colton?
Okay, one of my questions was basically about the size of, are they, are these just poles, or, I know some communication may be in boxes, will, you know, you see those green boxes and stuff. And second question, who determines the, the view or the line when it comes to a resident or pole or facility going into a residential area? Who determines that site of view, that line of sight, where it wouldn't disturb the line of sight?
Yeah.
And my third question on page thirty-five, at the bottom. It basically said that you, where you see the, the city council was crossed out and just said "city," and it deals with fines or, when it says "city," who is the city? Because is it the city, and I'm just being facetious, water department, the, the public works? Who in the city is?
Well, when we, when we made it more general like that, so that there was some latitude for administrat, for that to be handled administratively, that would be determination would be made through the city manager's office, but this gives some latitude for administration to be able to determine how they want it to be.
Right, but the reason why I'm concerned with this particular, how that wording is, the city manager may not feel that it's their responsibility to do that, or whomever else. Wouldn't it make better sense to designate a department or within the city, because that's broad? That's it.
Yeah, we can certainly make notes of all your comments, and then we'll, we'll have that discussion, I guess, and see if we want to leave that through. But I wouldn't know which department to make it, but, you know, I will be with Jeff and Mary, we can, we can look at that.
And who determines it?
Yeah, let me answer your other questions. So, the way this would, the way this would work, the height, or, this contemplates both a pole with an antenna, and it also contemplates ground equipment. So, it contemplates both. There would be poles placed, sort of in wherever they're going to go, but there would be ground equipment as well. Now, the ordinance has language that restricts the maximum size of the ground boxes, and it also limits how many can be placed within a certain radius of each other, so that there's not, you know, a whole area with just box after box after box. So, the ordinance does look at both of those things because both are contemplated.
So, I can wake up tomorrow, say, for example, and wake up and walk outside and to the side of my front property, and there's a box that's-
No, that's exactly, that's exactly what we are writing code to prevent. Right now, under your, right now, under your existing code, that could happen. This ordinance, if you didn't have the moratorium in place and are working on this ordinance, that's exactly the, is one of the big issues that we are writing this to prevent from happening.
Would I be notified if something like that was going to go in front of my property or any resident prior to it? Or is it something that the company then determines they need a box at such and such a location to better serve them? But I would not be a part of that discussion as to why you would need it in front of my property.
Hunter, how, Jeff, I guess I'll defer you on it. Is there a-
I don't think that any-
We didn't write, there's nothing written into this ordinance draft that, that addresses that.
I do think for the residents to have a say, it would be important because I'm looking, if I'm, I'm at a resident, tomorrow morning, the company can come and say, based on anything, we need to put this box in front of your property because it's the more feasible location to put it in. You may be able to put it in a vacant lot down the street by adding a little bit more power to your antenna.
Oh, I agree completely, and that, as I said, that's exactly what we're trying, that's how exactly we're trying to steer things with this. You know, and to answer your third question, so an application is made to put facilities in a right-of-way that has residential uses adjacent to it. Presumably, it would be, you'd get a site or a plan showing exactly where they want the poles to go, where they want the ground equipment to go. The building department, the engineering department, I guess, and the zoning department would look at that application, determine if it violates the requirements of where things can be placed in that type of a right-of-way. And I don't know if it would be the engineer, or it would be you, or who would make the determination that it, no, this, this is impeding the view from this resident, so it has to be moved. That's how the process would work. I don't know who the actual individual would be, but there will be, I don't know if you want to speak to that.
I think it might be to touch upon equal treatment providers and service providers, so if that process didn't exist for all providers, then you wouldn't have that for, so, necessarily.
No, you wouldn't. So, yeah. Right, but I guess to answer your question in the best way I can, this ordinance proposes to restrict where these things can go, where these towers, not towers, micro towers, where these antennas can go, where the ground equipment can go, and do it in such a way that has the least amount of impact on residential property. You know, we can't say, if, if we could say, you can't put them on residential streets, period, that would be easy. The only way you can do that is to say that you can't have any telecommunication facilities in residential streets, and then nobody gets, you know, service at their house. So, this, in my opinion, gives us some tools, as many tools as we can legally and defensively put on our books to protect the residential properties without violating the federal Telecommunication Act that requires the nondiscriminatory treatment, wireless versus the wire, and that sort of thing.
I agree with you, but that's why that question where I ask the city, who is, and we don't know, who makes those determination? The city? Who is the city or that department that makes that determination that I, as a resident, can go to, to say, Mr. Department Head, please reconsider such and such?
In my discussions with city staff in drafting this, it was important that building permits be applied for, so I would presume it would be, it would be the building department that reviews applications and actually issues the permits. The folks who, in your building department who issue the permits would be the ones with the first crack at this, looking at this, and they would be the ones actually issuing the permit and telling the applicant, yes, you can go and install facilities either pursuant to your application or as amended. So, the way this is written, it seems to me that would be the place that a resident would go if they had questions about what was proposed to be put in the right-of-way.
So, if I can ask, so, you're saying it's the building department's responsibility and not community development or the planning department?
Well, I would imagine they would work hand-in-hand on that, but as I said, in my discussions and drafting this, it was important to staff that we be very clear that building permits would be required, so.
Right, but, but, Mr. Davis, you're already at the building portion.
Let me, I'll let Jeff answer that because he's more familiar with the workings of your city.
Okay.
Yeah, as Mr. Davis had talked about, there was, maybe he didn't talk about it enough, but there was a lot of inter-partments of communication even on this language prior to becoming the planning zone board. So, any application for any facilities according to this code does require a building permit. However, when a building permit comes in, it's routed to each department that may have a say in the matter. So, typically, it would come into the building department, it would be the recipient, the building division would be the recipient of the application that falls under the purview of the community development department. From there, the information would be routed accordingly to engineering, to fire, to public works, police if there was a need associated with that, to allow for every department to provide input as necessary. And in that process, the building division kind of serves as the collector of information. So, if there was an issue associated with it, I would anticipate that a resident would most often go to the city manager's office, and from the city manager's office, information is distributed accordingly. So, the city manager thought that either, I mean, development department should be responsible for dealing with a particular item, or if the police department could accommodate the citizen's request, that's kind of how information is disseminated through the city.
Ms. Chair.
Ms. Brooks, your acknowledge.
I understand the process, but what I'm missing is to permit, I mean, because a regular citizen is not aware when somebody ought to come in and apply for a permit, correct? So, if someone comes in, they apply for a permit, my thing is, the tower can be up, and we, you know, and there would be no way, if I'm a resident and that's near my property or whatever, I wouldn't be aware until it's there. So, how would I, 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 there's no way, and then it's like after, I'm being, you know, now I'm going and it's, instead of being, you know, proactive, now I have to be, you know, react and, and react to it, whereas I'm just trying to understand, and I understand the process, but there's no way a citizen would know about the tower or anything unless, until it's up.
Right, I absolutely, I absolutely understand what you're saying, and that makes, that makes very good sense. I guess, as Mr. Davis had talked about briefly, and he also didn't provide his details, but he's, you know, I would say he's an expert on these facilities. He's worked with multiple jurisdictions on updating their language, and he has a really good sense of how far we can push the existing legal boundaries in order to protect our residents to the greatest extent possible. And that's what really caused staff to go to council, enact the moratorium, to really allow some sort of restrictions that were legal, of course, but something to allow a more uniform and, I guess, a distribution pattern that was going to be more consistent than what we had currently, or what would currently be allowed with our existing code. So, I understand what the, what multiple board members have discussed and asked for as far as notification to residents, but we also are bound by other state laws and federal laws as far as treatment to providers, and we have to treat all providers uniformly. So, we're, we're also bound with other restrictions that, that work for other entities and interests.
Well-
All that to say, you can have a public, you can have a notification process.
I, I, I think that's going to have to work because that's been consistent, and as I'm listening, you know, I was just reminded from earlier this year, and I think it might have came up in one of our prior meetings, homeowners or property owners have the responsibility to main certain right-of-ways that's, that's around their property, like the right-of-way that's in front of, depending on where you live, but you have a responsibility to do landscape and lawn maintenance on right-of-ways that's in front of your home. So, you know, in similar fashion, you know, just like we're taking special exception applications and so forth, and we notify the residents, I, I mean, that's only fair.
I agree, and I've heard that from a number of board members, and again, I will say, you can have, we can write, we can write a notification, public participation type of provision into this ordinance with no trouble.
Ms. Davis, did you have something?
I have a couple of questions. How many, I have three. How many feet apart are, what's the restriction? I mean, is it every thousand feet you're permitted to have a tower?
Let me look for that one, which is here.
And while you're looking, I guess this might be a silly question or a naive question on my part. So, one day I could wake up and have an AT&amp;T tower, and tomorrow, and the next day I could wake up and have down the street or in between a cable tower. Is that, or do they work together? I'm sorry, I'm just, as you can see, don't understand all this.
Each antenna may, may be dedicated, and then actually, again, like I said, folks here are more technical, who know more the technical side, but I believe that, you know, each antenna is dedicated to a particular provider, which is why we have language in here that, that talks about co-location and requiring co-location to the extent that that's possible. So, if you had one, you want to go with another, and there's already a facility, and it was possible to add it to the, to the existing pole, that would be from there.
And who makes that determination? Is it a city, a city person, or is it the provider of the original pole, or the owner of the pole?
Well, they're gonna, the applicant is going to ask to do whatever they're going to ask to do, and then, again, as it goes through the review process, it was explained, whether it's the engineering, or the building, or the community development, folks are going to look at it as well and say, wait a minute, there's already facilities here. I think that this needs to be co-located, and then, so it would be, it would be a discussion like that, and ultimately, you know, you would issue a permit, either with require co-location or, or not require co-location, so.
Yeah, I'm concerned about two things, two other things. Number one, that this goes to the city manager, and it seems, you know, you're here before us, so why doesn't it go to community development? I mean, that's sort of where things begin, and then move through the process, and the city manager manages employees, but she's not involved in building and aesthetics, and she's not going to know, or he, whoever that might be, not know the particulars of, just like we don't, but that's the department that we're looking at over there next to you. They understand those things. So, that's one. And number two, this is so different and difficult that it seems like it should rise to the, to the level of a special exception. So, I'd like to hear from somebody else besides me.
Well, again, remember, you're talking about city property, and you're talking about your own right-of-way, so it's not as though you have a property owner who's coming and asking to do something particular with their property. This is about someone coming and asking permission to use your right-of-way in a particular fashion. And this, this code is exact, doing exactly what a special exception is designed to do because it's putting all these criteria in your code as to where things can be and how they can be placed, and how far apart they can be placed. To answer your specific question, the code doesn't talk about distance for the, for the poles, per se. It talks about the spacing for the, for the ground equipment at 1,000 linear right-of-way feet apart from each other, so, but it doesn't discuss pole placement.
Chair.
Mrs. Jackson.
How does this affect gated communities?
Well, presumably, a gated community would have privately owned, privately owned roads, which are not city right-of-way, the city has no control over, so, I would imagine that, you know, if somebody wanted to come in and put something in, in those right-of-way, they'd have to get permission from the owner of that right-of-way, which- way, they'd have to get permission from the owner of that right of way, which, if we're talking about a gated community that's completely privately owned, that would not be the city.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the board choosing to ask a question or comment? Hearing none, is there any motions on the floor?
Just let me ask one question. We've made a number of suggestions, one about notification and a few other things. What a pro, I'm asking step, what's our approach at this point? Do we, do we bring this back for another, after the changes are made, or do we trust you to make the changes, is my question.
I'd say that for our conversation tonight, the changes haven't been all that comprehensive. Of course, it does fall on the purview of the board to move as, as you guys decide. What has been discussed tonight, though, is not comprehensive, it's not too much language to incorporate into the document, that is, if the planning zone board, as a board decides that they want to incorporate certain things, or if they have them, I think it's discussed. However, there hasn't been any motions. At this point, there hasn't been necessarily consensus among board members, so, I would ask that if motions do occur, that there is very clear definition of what the board is asking for.
Let me, for the board and all of us, maybe, let me try to summarize it. One of the things we're asking for is that, at some point in time, there's some notification of the homeowner, homeowners within the area affected. I mean, we do that now, notifying people within 500 feet, 1,000 feet, depending, so we're looking for that. We're looking also, the other comments were that we wanted to know specifically who's going to be responsible for the implementation of the ordinance and the enforcement of the ordinance. So, I think those are the two major issues. Any other comments?
I'm sorry, and we never, I, I, I would like to know the distance between the poles. I mean, that's not...
Okay. We know the distance between the ground equipment, we don't know the difference, distance between each of the antennas. So, that's three.
Well, you know, interesting enough, I think all of those three, additionally, when I heard Ms. Davis say it was notification to the owners of whose equipment it is in the event of emergency, is the only thing that falls outside of what I would see that would be involved in the special exception process. So, it seems like if we require these telecommunications companies or agencies to do a special exception application, that would cover at least three of those items that I've just heard mentioned, and then not only that, it'll have a full review of each department. So, you know, I, I can certainly concur with Mr. Colton saying, you know, the clarification about the broad, broadness of the city, I mean, yeah, that's one for me. I, I would like to know, two, you know, who can you pinpoint and say, well, is it code enforcement, planning department? So, I would definitely lean on having it go through the special exception process, because that would definitely eliminate three of those items that I just heard, well, encompass three of those items. Any other members?
Can I make a motion to...
No, Ms. Davis, I'm sorry, Ms. Jackson. This, if we can hold off on the Jackson, respectfully, if we can hold off, I want to make sure we have a, a good consensus of where we're going before we make any motions, so I don't want to...
I was gonna make a motion to accept it, to include all of the recommendations that we just said.
Okay, let, let's just see if there's any other recommendations or any other comments, and then you, the floor is open, I just, we got into something one meeting, and someone made a motion, and there were comments still being made, so...
Okay, no problem.
Go ahead. Ms., Ms. Brooks?
Okay, um, as, as far as the distance, that was good, but the notification of the homeowner, homeowners, I think we need to know within how many feet? I mean, you know, normally, we, you know, notify within 1,000, 500 feet, I think it just needs to be within, and I'm not sure you can decide, what's normal when we do notifications of homeowners. Is it 500 feet or something? I'm not sure.
The current code requirement, I believe, is 300 feet.
300.
I would add to that, whose responsibility...
To notify.
...of notification, if that's the board's privilege. And, and also, might be out of order, we do have representatives here tonight from different telecommunications providers, and they just weren't aware that they needed a public comment card, so, if the chairperson could allow a couple minutes...
So...
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chair, board members, my name is Hope Calhoun, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Becker and Pollyakov. Tonight, I'm here representing Crown Castle, who is a cell tower provider, and I just, as I hear your discussion, I just wanted to kind of highlight something that Mr. Davis previously said, and also staff has also said with regard to the way the ordinance is written and certain regulations, and I hear the board leaning toward modifying this ordinance to make it a special exception, and just one thing to keep in mind with the new legislation, recent legislation, the idea is to keep everyone on the same playing field, so that would mean your cable providers, your electrical providers, I don't know who else would come in, would also have to come before you for special exception. The idea is that everyone is treated equally, so that's, I'm guessing, why this was drafted the way that it was, so that everyone is treated the same way. So, just consider that as you deliberate. And also, with regard to notice, there's also federal regulations regarding timing of review and processing of our applications, and I don't know what language you're proposing specifically with regard to notice, but there is a 30-day shot clock, it's called, within which an application should be reviewed, either denied or approved. So, just keeping that in mind as you direct staff to, to make any amendments to this ordinance.
A follow-up, Ms., Ms. Calhoun?
Yes.
The 30 days, where is that at?
Those are federal regulations.
Okay. As far as telecommunications from the, for, so, you're telling me there's a 30-day window in which a municipality or local government has to either accept or deny an applicant?
There, Federal, FCC, Federal Communications Commission Regulations, which is, which are the regulations that govern communications such as these, and so, yes, the way the guidelines read, and Lisa, please correct me if I'm wrong, the municipality does have 30 days within which to render a decision. So, we, we submit an application, and it is our position that...
This has 45 days in here.
And it's our, right, I was just saying, you were talking about notice.
Oh, okay.
So, we were just, I'm just making it clear, I guess, or clarifying that, as you consider the notice language you put in, that it doesn't put the city in a position to potentially violate any other regulations.
I'm sorry, did you say notice or to accept or deny an application?
I was speaking specifically to, the 30 days regard, regards, except, excuse me, apply... The 30 days is either to deny or approve an application. The reason I mention that is because you were speaking, the board was speaking about notice, so as you decide to craft your language with regard to notice, I just wanted you to have that 30-day period in mind. I don't know what language you're gonna propose, but I just didn't want one to interfere with the existing federal regulations, that's why I mentioned it. Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for me?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, my name is Lisa Maxwell, I'm a consultant for Crown Castle. I want to try to address some of the technical questions that came up today. This is not a situation of build it and they will come, or hope they will come. We're in a situation, really, where the industry's at a, at a crossroads, and frankly, in, in virtual crisis in a lot of areas of the country. No one anticipated when the cell towers went in, that these devices would be streaming video and streaming music and doing all the things that we do with these devices. The towers were purposely built, and I'm talking the big towers, away from residential areas, because no one wanted them in their backyards. As a consequence, the towers are so incredibly taxed right now, that in many areas, particularly way far away from the towers, you have situations where people can't make a cellphone call out of their house, and I don't know if any of you, I can't barely make a call out of my house, I live in Lake Worth. It's getting worse and worse and worse. We've actually had a number of instances where, you know, these are being used as primary phones now. More than 65% of all households only use cellphones, they don't have landlines anymore. So, consequently, when you need to call 911, this is what you're using. We've had unfortunate incidences where people have not been able to get a 911 call out, so it's getting more and more, the, the, the issues are degrading more and more. Our customers are the cell providers, so they come to us and they say, and they show us heat maps, and the heat maps show the signal in particular areas, and when they're purple, it's virtually no signal getting into those areas. So, these little mini cell towers, the part that's actually the antenna is about that tall, sits on the top of a pole, and we put them in an area where the provider has told us there's virtually no signal coming out of that area. They typically surround that area, and they're very short range, they're no more than a quarter mile. So, they direct and boost the signal in that area, they alleviate the traffic, they connect through a fiber back to a hub and then to the tower. So, they, they relieve the tower, but more importantly, they specifically address problems that are going into a particular residential area. You have a concentration area in the city, and that's why we're here. There are other cities, Miami Beach, Miramar, Pembroke Pines, Plantation, Tamarack, that have also adopted ordinances, also have these kinds of issues, and more and more cities will. If you go to New York City, you'll see that these little towers are on the end of the floor, not just on the building, they're at the end of each wall boosting signals. So, this is just something that's happening, and we're scrambling to address it. I think the, the sooner this happens, the better for the residents, because, again, it's not, the situation's not getting better, it's actually getting worse. Our goal is not to create more congestion in your right of way or create view hazards for people, we spend a lot of time working to avoid that, and we work hand in glove with residents, and we don't have a problem with that. But, the law says we have to be treated equally. So, if there's a special exception for us, there has to be a special exception every time Comcast wants to run a cable, and I think you'll overtax your system pretty extensively if you do that. So, our goal is to work with the staff, work with the city, come up with great solutions, not overcongest your right of way, but address the areas that absolutely have to get service. So, that, that's our goal. And I'll answer any questions. Thank you.
Ms. Maxwell, remind us again what Crown Castle's role, are, are you guys the owners?
We don't, we're not a cellular company, we provide the backbone, so we provide the tower, the fiber hubs, that's all we do. Our customers are the AT&amp;T and the T-Mobiles, and that's who comes to us. Each, you asked, I think, about, about the, how many in the cabinet? Each cabinet right now can accommodate two carriers. So, if you have a pole or an antenna, you can have two carriers on that antenna. Can I answer your question?
Members, any other questions?
Thank you.
Well, one question, how many cell providers are there in this area?
Right now, there's really the big four. I mean, there are others, but the ones that are really, you know, involved in degrading of signals and, and customer service problems are the big ones, there's really just four.
So, in effect, if the box and antenna can accommodate two carriers, so we put one antenna here, and that's, say, AT&amp;T and Verizon, so, at some point down the road, we have another antenna, and that accommodates T-Mobile and, you know, whatever. Am I on a kind of right path?
Yeah, if, if that's their, if there is a concentration of their, and this is all proprietary, so they don't like to let everybody know where their customers are, but if, if they have a concentration and that's a problem for, for them, and those customers are in that area, then that would show up on, on those heat maps.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
One more question.
Ms. Maxwell, one more question.
Um, is it, would it be legal for the city to pass an ordinance that said that all the providers have to work together in the same cabinet if it's, if it, if now two providers per cabinet? Why couldn't it be four providers per cabinet?
It's just, it's, it's a limitation of the technology. The cabinet holds a computer and a battery backup, and that connects to the antenna. And right now, the technology, you'd have to have a much bigger cabinet and a bigger antenna to accommodate more providers, so it's, it's just where the technology is. I think everything's moving smaller, and that's our goal. Our, we don't want to put a proliferation of poles because it's expensive. Our goal really would be to ideally co-locate. Oftentimes, that's not feasible, because FP and L will say no, or the pole owner will say no. So, and, and bear in mind, we're in for eight, eight applications, so eight poles total, and it is our work plan, and that's through the next couple of years.
In Vivier Beach, you're in for eight applications?
Eight poles, yes, that's it. That's our work program for the next several years.
So, that's a pole, an application for each pole?
Yes, eight poles. So, I don't think you're gonna see, I, I know everybody kind of visualizes a huge proliferation of these things, but I really think that that's not going to happen.
Right, well, of those eight, you've identified the locations, and I guess, I, I don't know if this illustration is an accurate depiction of, like, where it would be, but this is, this seems to be, I'm not sure if this is a parking lot or maybe alongside...
Those are existing poles, so our applications are, the, the poles are not in, so those are just examples.
Right. But I want to get an understanding of the eight, where, where are they going to be located? Are they going to be in the easement, I mean, the right of way, there are several different right of ways in the city. Like, can you kind of give us an idea, or do you, do you know, perhaps?
We have, the applications have been submitted to the staff. I apologize, I don't, I can't characterize each one of them.
Okay.
They are in the right of way, but I can't tell you exactly where they are. But, but the applications are, and staff does have applications who have submitted.
Okay. Thank you, unless there's any other member.
I'll do that one, I think. It seems like it would be important for us to know where they are.
Oh, absolutely. We haven't been, our applications have not been reviewed because there hasn't been an ordinance. So, as soon as this ordinance is adopted, and frankly, we're hoping it's very, very soon, because we've been at this two years, we've been trying to get this done in the city for two years. So, we're hoping it's sooner rather than later, but we understand there's an application process, the node locations will have to be identified, staff will have to review them all, and permits will have to be issued, so those will all be made now, but we have not, there's been no receiver of our applications, if you will, we've submitted them, but they haven't gone anywhere.
Two years ago?
Yes.
Chair?
Ms. Jackson?
Uh, my question is for Mr. Gag. Uh, once they, they've submitted the application, so will that come back before P and Z for approval, each application?
No, it, it's an application for a building permit, and...
Okay.
Applications, the, the history where applications were submitted... And applications, the history where applications were submitted, staff had concern about our existing regulations, we felt as if there wasn't enough descriptive language as far as establishing a uniform pattern and predictable pattern for establishing facilities. But they are just building permits, so it's not an item that would come before planning its own accord.
Okay, thank you.
Members, the floor is open for any other comments, questions. We have identified a few things. I just want to know what the consensus is or the direction of the board.
Chair, you know.
Ms. Jackson?
I would recommend that, you know, we approve it with them, going back and making the necessary additions or corrections, rather than continue to hold it up and wait until the next P&amp;Z board for them to come back with the correct language. That's, that's my opinion.
Okay. Just one second, Mr. Canuti. How is it that, that the 30 days that I said you, I just heard you reference does not apply in this situation?
Let me, let me see if I can help, and I'm not a lawyer, so bear with me. But the FCC has recently given guidance on this issue, because as you can imagine, everywhere around the country, municipalities are concerned about where these things go and being in the right way. The FCC has basically established, along with the courts, this notion of a shot clock. So that when an application is received for one of these, the clock is deemed to have begun, and there's a certain period of time, I believe it's 30 days, in which the local government has to make a determination on the application. That's the Federal Communications Commission. There's been a lot of hubbub about that and back and forth, so I said, he hasn't had a chance to review it, but this month, the FCC has issued guidance to the cities and actually to everybody in the country about what their intention is with the regulations that they're imposing federally. So these are federal requirements, and they're pretty, pretty specific. We'd be happy to send them to you, for you to take a look at, but it's, it's the point at which you submit the application, to the point at which a determination is made.
If I may, if I might just add to that, to answer a little bit more specifically your question. So what happened is when the applications were submitted over two years ago, Crown Castle takes, took the position, still does take the position, that the 30-day shot clock started two years ago. However, until these, this recent, let me finish just one thought. The city, this city and many other cities take, have taken the position that that's not accurate, that that 30-day shot clock doesn't apply, for various reasons. Different cities have different reasons. So up until very recently, there were not guidelines that said specifically what the 30 days is, when the 30 days is, until very recently. So the reason it has gone on for two years is because no one has litigated that point. What is the 30 days and when is it? Again, our position has always been Crown Castle's position, and many other providers have been, it's 30 days when we submit, we need an answer. But the only way to force an answer, so to speak, is to litigate, and Crown Castle has just chosen not to do that. We've just continued to work with staff. There's no point.
But Ms. Calhoun, you know, local governments has a pretty hefty responsibility of, of, what I'm, what I'm hearing just doesn't make a lot of sense, and maybe it's, I don't understand, but you're telling, and I don't want to make it seem personal, but the FCC, it seems like is not allowing municipalities to have home room, because home rule, excuse me. Initially, you have to receive an application, it sure has to go through some departments, there has to be a review if it's consistent with the LDRs or the comprehensive plan, and I just don't even see that that's possible. You know, I don't know if it helped the case that you said that Crown Castle chose not to litigate, but I just don't see that a city can possibly get that off. Our agendas, you know, you know, that's, that's what I'm saying. If we chose to send this to a special, if we made a recommendation to council that said that the P&amp;Z board recommended that these applications go through a special exception process, I don't see that that's possible. So it would seem like Crown Castle would end up in litigation if they don't think that's something that's feasible for them. But it is really unreasonable to expect that any municipality to, to do an application in 30 days, especially for something that involves a building permit, that affects not people that sit on the board at the FCC, but, you know, in our community. And that's kind of where I'm at with that, and, you know, I just don't see how that could possibly work.
I understand your position, but that's, the ruling that's recently come out.
Mr. Davis, you want to add to that?
Well, you know, in my view, and I, I will admit I have not read this recent ruling, but up to this point, in my view, the shot clock has been a guideline, and you do have home rule, and cities do have processes, and I agree completely that a 30-day deadline is quite often not just unreasonable, but not possible. And as I said, in my view, the 30-day shot clock has been a guideline as opposed to a hard and fast, if you don't do it on day 31, all kinds of bad things are going to happen. In my opinion, that's simply not the case. Again, not having read this recent opinion. Now, the other, the other piece of this that I want to talk just for a minute about, the special exception concept. If the board was inclined to go that route, it's been said, but I really want to reiterate it, that would have to apply to everybody. It would not be my recommendation to do that in this case. You know, I think you're adding layers of.
Bureaucracy?
Well, thank you, you know, do you, you know, do you want to see every time FPL wants to come in and add something, or every time Comcast wants to come in and do something, it would have to apply equally to everybody. In my view, it would become extremely burdensome for the cities, whatever your process is. I think it would be very burdensome, so I just, I want you to consider that when you're, when you're thinking about that part of the process. I think, in my, in my view, we've written things into this ordinance that, that contain the protections that a special exception process would be designed to address, and you know, with the comments that you've made and the additions that we can work on regarding the notice requirement. You know, and I don't view a notice requirement as anything that would impede the application process. Quite honestly, we can make the applicant, we can make that part of the application and require the applicants to do the notice as part of their application, so that the application wouldn't be complete until the notice went out. So there are certainly ways to accomplish, that the city needs to accomplish without violating federal regulations. However, in my opinion, adding that layer of process may create more problems than it solves.
A follow-up question for you, Mr. Davis. So suppose a municipality chooses to deny XYZ company for telecommunication tower, does the FCC also provide for remedies and appeals that guides the municipality or the local government, or that, that an applicant can, can utilize that bounds the municipality? So for instance, if the city of Riviera Beach denies XYZ, does the FCC also spell out any remedies?
I guess it's kind of a difficult question. Is the denial based on an incomplete application, or is it just based on we don't want this particular provider to put its facilities in our right-of-way at all? I'm not sure I can answer the question. There's, you know, if, if you've got a process in place, and an applicant comes in, and they comply with your process, and the city still denies the application, I do believe there are remedies and penalties and that sort of thing. I mean, you know, as I said earlier, you could say, we don't want any telecommunications in our rights-of-way, and not allow any of them in. Well, everyone's being treated equally, but nobody's going to have those telecommunications services in your city. So, you know, it's about finding that balance where we want to keep our rights-of-way regulated the way we want them, but we still allow the telecommunications. And that's what we're trying very hard to do with this ordinance, is find that balance.
Members, any other questions or comments?
I have no other comments, but I'd like to hear Ms. Jackson's motion.
Okay. Ms. Jackson, you're acknowledged.
Well, Ms. Jackson, I don't, because I've heard some things that we can do and we can't do, or we should think about doing. So I guess I'll just put the motion in, and you'll go from there, okay? Is that okay, Chair?
Yes.
All right. I want to make a motion that we accept the presentation, the ordinance, with the corrections and additions of what the staff can do.
I'll second that.
Properly moved and second. Let's just be clear on what, what these changes are.
Do we have to read that? Shouldn't we read the entire motion? I mean, the entire, it should be read.
Just, just a point of order. I think the motion may need to be amended, just to clarify which portions that there were a lot of items discussed, even that were summarized towards the end of the conversation. So I don't know if that encompassed every comment. We really need a more precise motion, I think.
Ms. Jackson, I'm gonna let you amend it. I'm gonna acknowledge you to amend it. Just before we do that, I guess the question that I have for you, Jeff, is from staff's perspective, some of these things about the guidelines and the regulations from the FCC, are we, you know, where are we at with that, like, from the city's position? Because.
Well, there was a lot of discussion about 30-day timeline, and let's say an application was submitted, and there was question or comment, some sort of response generated by the city to the applicant within that 30-day timeframe. My understanding is the time clock would, and start over at 30 days. So it couldn't be something where an application or an applicant wasn't providing sufficient information, and then the city was bound to a certain timeframe. I think it's just there, so municipalities have to continue moving applications along and that there isn't an ability to completely just stall a project. That's my guess why the regulations were put in place.
Well, if that's been the case, do we need to make any modifications? Because I seen 45 days referenced in the, in the language. Should that also be changed?
There was one, one section that was originally 30 days. Do you have the page number?
Nine.
Yes.
Page nine.
Nine.
And, and I guess additionally, Jeff, what I was kind of concerned, we did hear from the applicant and, you know, Crown Castle and their representative, but from the city's perspective, would you recommend that we proceed with what we've just heard from staff? Because, you know, I know there was some reference to state statutes, but I didn't know that, you know, we should have kind of had an idea or should have had some knowledge about FCC regulations. So, you know, is it your opinion that we should accept the recommendations as presented by Crown Castle and their representative?
45 days is under the registration piece, it's not under the permanent application piece, which is really a sub, I mean.
Two separate things?
The registration is not applying for a permit. So in my, in my opinion, registration process is not, is not, I'll find out, shot clock. That, that has to do with registering, it doesn't have to do with applying for a permit. So my recommendation, 30 versus 45, I would defer to the city on that, but I don't think that that 45-day number is impacted.
Well, that, that, that further complicates it, because what comes first? Is it the permit or is it the registration?
Registration always comes first. You have to be registered before you can apply for a permit.
So that can.
But I mean, if, if the board believes that making it 30 days makes it, keeps it simple and keeps it consistent, there's, I have no problem putting it back at 30.
It's actually with staff's recommendation. I believe it was originally in 30 for the application process, and to be honest, we were worried that multiple telecommunication providers were going to submit, you know, the day after the ordinance was approved. So that would only provide staff 30 days to respond in the application process, so it just gave us another couple of weeks of leeway as far as registering applicants to go through that process.
So if the shot clock does not apply to the registration, why not make the registration period 90 days, 120 days? Because.
We also want to be fair to the applicants as well.
Well, two years now, I mean, are we speaking fair now? Because they said they submitted two years ago, but you, you.
I think that's apples and oranges.
Right, but, but here we are. You just said that you don't want the ordinance to pass on one day, and then they come in the next day with, with a bunch of applications. Let's, let's not extend the registration window a little bit further for staff, because for one, you know, they can register, doesn't mean they're actually going to get a building permit, correct? So, you know, that's a process that has to take place. So if you have multiple applications or you have multiple locations, it's just going to be that much more arduous on staff, and, you know, this is a lot of information. It's a lot of information for us to actually, to sit here and just try to go through, and I imagine it's going to be even, if not more, I'm cer, I'm certain it's going to be more difficult for staff to try to establish policies and procedures. That's why I understood that it wouldn't be feasible to put a cost for the application inside of the ordinances, because they're costs. So would it be any objection, or would you think it's prudent for us to extend the registration window, or make a recommendation to extend it?
I think that staff is comfortable with 45 days. If the board feels as if it should be extended, if there's a benefit, we, we want to be as fair as possible, so we really don't want to extend that above and beyond further. So even that 45-day window, let's say it was 60 days, it's, it's really to allow staff, at least that window, to respond to an application. So just because it's 45 days, or whatever the number is, it just guarantees for the applicant that they're going to get some movement, some response, and we're really looking out for, for the applicant more than, more than city staff in that regard.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson, I think you, if no one else has anything, you can make your amended motion.
Okay. I'd like to amend my motion to include the language of community notification and designation of a specific department to manage and enforce the ordinance as presented.
It's been moved.
This one, Ms.?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Properly moved by Mrs. Jackson, seconded by Mr. Canuti. Any other questions, concern, unreadiness?
Yes.
Ms. Brooks?
We didn't address the distance. I mean, the, I'm sorry.
The distance between the.
I'm sorry. I can leave, forget the distance.
Okay. Mrs. Davis?
Yes, we didn't address the in case of an emergency to notify the owner of the pole or whatever it is.
I thought we said notification, community notification.
It was done to the.
In case of the homeowner. Okay. So, say it again. To.
To whoever owns the pole, you know, they need to notify them immediately.
So you understand, it, it was a section in here that referenced, in the event that the city needed to remove the equipment, Ms. Davis is asking that, that the city also notifies the owner of the equipment.
Okay, so.
So just include that in your amended, just one second before you amend again.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
With regards to the emergency, if the city needs to move a pole based on emergency, why would they need right now, and it needs to be moved, to notify the owner? That would be my concern, if it needs to be moved.
What she's saying, if you, there was a section in here, Ms. Davis, there was a section in here that referenced, in case of an emergency, the city may commence repairs without any prior notice to the registrant. Well, I think what she. Well, I think what she meant, and Ms. Davis, help me if I'm-
No, what I meant was, it doesn't, there's no reference to notifying the owner at all. I wanted them to be notified immediately, not, not to get permission to remove it, but just notified.
For the emergency, prior-
No, 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 not prior. Subsequently.
Okay.
Immediately.
Now-
After the fact, sometime, okay.
Okay. Any other concerns? Now, does this need to be read in full with the amendments?
Well, this is a point of order. There, I believe there's a motion in second on the floor right now.
Okay.
There's a second motion, so I don't know if-
I don't know if it was second.
Was it not?
Well-
I believe it was a second, so there's a lot of discussion deliberation, so there is, this is a point of order. An active motion is second on the floor.
Okay.
So I don't know if that wants to be through at this point, by the motion maker, and the new motion's made, or if you'd like to act on that motion.
She, you have the floor, Ms. Jackson.
Okay, I will withdraw that motion and, uh, make a new motion. All right, I, do I need to read this whole ordinance? I don't need to read the entire thing?
You shouldn't have-
For the record, I-
Thank you, sure.
It might be best to read as much as possible, yes.
All right, um, I'd like to make a motion that, um, the telecommunications regulations of the city's code of ordinances by renaming, Article Six placement and maintenance of facilities for communications services in rights of way, updating definitions in conformance with state law, providing for wireless communications facilities, updating and revising the registration and permitting process, requiring design features for certain above-ground facilities, providing placement parameters for wireless telecommunications facilities in residential rights of way, revising administration and enforcement procedures, providing regulations for pass-through providers in accordance with state law, providing for conflict severability and codification, and providing an effective date to also, uh, include the language of community notification and designation of specific department, uh, to manage and enforce the ordinance, in addition to include notification of emergency situations, um, to the owner immediately.
It's been moved. Second, properly moved in second. Mr. Velasquez, we call the roll, please.
Kimberly Jackson?
Yes.
Brian Bolton?
Yes.
Julius Wiggum?
Yes.
Marie Davis?
Yes.
Michelle Bruce?
Yes.
Edward Canuti?
Yes.
Frederick McCoy?
Yes.
Nameless voting, motion approved.
Thank you. Item B?
Item B under new business. That is application SE fourteen oh two, a special exception application from Ray A. Ransome to operate an assisted living facility located at ten twenty-nine West Twenty-Eighth Street. The applicant, the applicant is present. Uh, tonight we'll have Mr. Mario Velasquez, Senior Planner, to provide the board with a presentation. Good evening, Mario Velasquez, Senior Planner. Item D is also more assisted living facility. Tonight, I am, it's a special exception number fourteen oh two, we will go over the special, uh, the assisted living facility, will review the location, give familiarity with the area, will also review the staff analysis and finalize presentation with a special exception analysis. As you see, as you can see on the screen, the, the red dot is the location of the, the site in question. North of Blue Huron, close to Old Dixie Highway. As which will mean, you can see that it's on the south side of Twenty-Eighth Street, west of Old Dixie. It looks kind of dark, but that's the, that's the property, that's the front of the, of the house. It is located at ten twenty-nine West Twenty-Eighth Street. The site is eight thousand seven hundred fifty square feet. Its owner is multiple family residential, RM fifteen, the future land use is medium density residential. Looking at the east side and the west side of the, of this property, we have a residential structure on the west side and a baking lot on the east side. On the north side, we have, right across from this property, we have a baking lot. So, you know, on the northwest, there is a multifamily structure, the zoning is RM fifteen as well. And on the northeast, it's commercial, that's the bottom right picture, and it's like a convenience store. On the screen, you can see the site plan that has been provided by the applicant. Now, the special exception is for the use that is proposed, that's the assisted living facility, aware. The structure will be, if this special exception is granted, the structure will be remodeled. They will do an addition, that's why you can see on the site plan that they show a new single-story addition and additional parking, but that's not how this is being done right now. It does not have the, the structure based in the center. For the staff analysis, the applicant is requesting a special exception application to operate an assisted living facility at ten twenty-nine West Twenty-Eighth Street. Facility is proposed to have from eight to fifteen permanent residents, depending on single or double occupancy after the completion of the proposed building addition, if you want to just mention. This proposed use complies with the city's land development regulations, providing the special exception approval is granted by the city council in the multiple-family RM fifteen zoning district. The proposed use is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. City services such as roads, water, sewer, and garbage collection are firmly available to the site. Staff considers the proposed landscaping improvements to be appropriate. The applicant is providing four parking spaces to satisfy the facility's needs. Now going through the special exception analysis, you can see there's ingress to and ingress from the side directly of West Twenty-Eighth Street, which can be accessed either through Old Dixie Highway or Avenue O. For off-street parking and loading areas, driveway will provide four parking spaces. Refuse and service areas, there is the regular schedule for roll-out garbage containers collection. It will keep functioning in a residential neighborhood. Utilities, we can see that, um, utilities are and will be available and active on the entire property. For screening, buffering, landscaping, landscaping exists on site, which must be maintained according to city's land development regulation, the existing and the, the proposed improvement. There are no signs present or proposed for this, for this location, for this business. And adequate yard, mountain space has been proposed in accordance with city's land development code. This complies, even after the renovation, the addition to the algae, it still comply with the purpose and purpose ratios and setbacks and all the development regulations. So staff recommends approval to operate an assisted living facility at ten twenty-nine West Twenty-Eighth Street with the following conditions. One, must be in compliance with state and county laws regulating assisted living facilities. Two, all feature advertising must state that the facility is located in the city of Riviera Beach. Business penalties in accordance with city code section thirty-one five five four delivered against the property, property owner and our business for violations of this section. Number three, driveway should not be closer than five feet to the property line. A five-foot cut on the existing driveway is required before the certificate of occupancy is issued by the building official. Number four, perimeter landscaping needs to be improved. Number five, onsite parking is limited to four parking spaces, on-street parking is prohibited. If you have any questions, the applicant is pressing, hopefully the man can answer everything.
Mr. Velasquez, is your question of Mr. Velasquez? Any questions for Mr. Velasquez?
I have a question.
For Mr. Velasquez, or for the applicant?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, on your conditions, your first condit- condition, uh, don't you normally have that before you, you don't ha- uh, well, let me just ask the question. Do you have the county and state approval for the assisted living for the, from the applicant? Have, have they provided that, I mean, if-
They need to be licensed-
Right.
With the, the state before they're licensed with the city.
So you don't have-
Which we have the business activity, city's interest, they can use.
Right. So are you saying that's a condition that they have to get the license? They're not licensed right now, correct?
Right. Because they need to be approved by the city.
Okay.
Okay. Nothing of this, Mr. Velasquez, is the question of the applicant.
I guess I have one of Mr. Velasquez. Um, what, once it's remodeled, what's the size? I know you said what the, the size of the parcel is about eight thousand feet, right? Is that what you said? And what's the size of, not the parcel, but the building, once it's completed?
The parcel is twenty-four hundred square feet.
It's twenty-four hundred square feet? And also, it looked, it appeared from your photograph that it only accommodates three vehicles.
What is proposed, because the other screen has one, two, three, and four-
Well, cur- I mean, just the photograph, so they'll be reworking the entire driveway?
Oh, yes, from the picture showing the facade of the house, yes, they'll redo that area.
Um, have you had any comments from the police department?
There was clearance from the police department.
I drove by there, and, um, there are some abandoned houses not far away. And the location, it just didn't seem really safe, as it appears today with, because of the surrounding properties. I don't know if I'd feel safe having my grandmother there, with all due respect.
Maybe the applicant can provide more background there.
Okay.
Good evening, Chair and Board. You had answered any questions yet? Priscilla, your question specifically, what?
And your, what's your name?
My name, my name is Dr. Ray Ransome.
Okay. Um, I, I drove there today, and it seemed that there were some abandoned houses not very far away. And I had some concern about the elderly being placed in that location.
There will be a six-foot wooden fence surrounding the property, the entire perimeter. We have one of the most advanced security systems in place. I would be able to monitor the entire facility, the exterior facility, from an iPad anywhere that I am. Um, my area specialty, area of specialty is real estate and high crime areas. I've been involved with housing for over thirty-five years. I go into areas that have abandoned houses on the streets, and I do renovations and put people in the houses that are not, you know, involved with the criminal elements and, you know, the bad things. My specialty is bringing up areas like that. And I do believe that it's more a gamble on my part to do it, but I do know that I've done it before in other areas in West Palm Beach, it's on the, you know, worse areas they are. And I don't have a problem with the abandoned houses. I'm familiar with the ownership of those properties being mainly investors. And, uh, my intent was to put something on the street that would kind of bring the neighborhood up. You have a, uh, elderly center down the street, I believe it's the Davis Center, we could utilize that. You have churches on the street, and, uh, it has potential. A long time ago, thirty-some years ago, it was a pretty good street. I have confidence that it can be changed, so I'm willing to take that risk in doing that. The residents will be safe in answering your question.
Thank you.
Chair.
Mrs. Jackson.
Dr. Ransome?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you, you list mainly elderly. Are there going to be other exceptions as far as, um, is it age specific? Or is it, um, um, medical condition specific, or is it both? That's one question that I have. And then the second question, um, I see under special exceptions, you also have background checks. So are you doing background checks on the, um, the tenants? Or, uh, uh, the residents, shall I say, or is that specifically for the staff?
Uh, answering the last question, the background checks are required level two for all staff.
Okay, so the residents will not have background check?
No. And answering the first question, the age limitation starts at eighteen. But our predominant, uh, resident population would more than likely be the elderly, around sixty to ninety.
Okay.
Consistent with research.
So you're not really gonna be doing it based on condition?
Uh, no, they need to, I have to prequalify them. Uh, determine whether they are worthy of, of qualified according to state regulations to be in the facility. Uh, most young people that are around eighteen will be dealing with mental health situations. And we're not applying that license at this time. We'll, we'll probably apply for an extended concrete care license and a limited nursing service license in addition to the regular standard assisted living facility license.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wiggum?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. And first of all, I'd like to, uh, thank the applicant for considering putting a living assistance facility in Riviera Beach. We are in need of it.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, this is a five-bedroom facility. And if you notice, in the, the back of the place, you have a lot of extra land back there. Do you plan to add on later on, if we approve, or is that?
Uh, no, actually, it's eight bedrooms. You have three existing and existing property, and the five would be in the condition. And you still have another sixty feet behind that in which some trees are planted. There's a five-foot-high wall there. We would like that area to be more of a recreational area, in addition to the patio on the side for the, for the, uh, for the residents. Uh, we're not trying to expand it beyond what it is, but it would be a nice recreational area.
Now, the reason I ask that is because, uh, these people are gonna want to go outside.
Yes.
And right here, you have a concrete slab back there in the back, that way they could sit out and relax.
Well, in the back, actually, there are trees back there. Mahogany and, uh, oak tree, uh, trees back there. In a sixty-by, uh, fifty-foot area, that's the tree area. But on the side, there's a patio, on the side that you can go out and sit in that patio, concrete patio area to congregate out there. In addition to the inside, you got a lot of area inside to congregate also.
Well, I think if I asked an old question, I asked an old question because, uh, we do need some, I live with, I took themself, sort of, to them in Riviera Beach.
Yes.
And I'm hoping the board understands that, uh, with the applicant's approval by the other agents, that this will be a benefit to our city.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Colton?
You had mentioned that you, um, specialize in going into neighborhoods, and you referenced some areas, I don't know if it's West Palm Beach that you have gone into. Do you have any type of, um, reference material as far as where you've gone into? And how is it- And how is it, from the time that you went in, did it turn around, did it make it better? Or is there just your stain that you reference certain?
There is, there is no documentation specifically, it's just my observation of how the neighborhood turns around. Uh, Eleventh Street in West Palm Beach, these are drug areas. Uh, Nineteenth Street, Twenty-first Street, I went in and purchased abandoned properties there. I'm also a state-licensed GC. And rehabbed the properties, uh, put people in there that I knew were not involved in drugs or gangs. And we watched the street change, because it's, it's a situation in which they have elevated target streets. And you can lead them out of one street and they'll go to another street if you allow them there. But we do, we have noticed a change on Twenty-first Street. There was a change on Nineteenth Street, there was a gang called Nineteenth Street Gang, they're no longer there. Um, battling the Sixth Street Gang. I purchased properties on those streets. Eleventh Street, there was a drug situation there, it's no longer there. It's specifically my observation of the change and, you know, compliments from neighbors, you know, that's a decent area.
Mrs. Davis.
Sir, did you say you're a doctor?
Yes, I have a PhD in business administration here at Expertis Real Estate. One of the markets that I specialize is high crime areas.
Thank you.
Mr. Canooty.
Yeah, a couple of questions. Uh, have you done, uh, uh, facilities like this in the past?
No, I've been housing, every time you have, I own a facility.
Okay, so this is your first attempt at this kind of a facility?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and you're still applying for your state, uh, license?
Well, I passed the court training, as a matter of fact, within forty-eight hours on a Saturday in Orlando, I've been taking the state exam.
Okay, so, okay, so it's all in process?
Yes.
Okay, so, I noticed that, uh, you're incorporated in New Mexico.
Yes.
And there's a mailing address in Fairbanks, Alaska?
Yes.
I'll just kind of explain that kind of geography.
This, also more management was what you call a, a shelf LLC. When you don't wanna go out and create a, a completely different LLC from scratch, you can get a shelf LLC. And my, I have an address in Alaska, I have, uh, you know, assets in Alaska. Uh, we just use that address. Uh, it's for, more for confidentiality more than anything else.
Have you done projects in other states?
Uh, no.
Okay, so you're concentrated in this area?
Yes, as a matter of fact, Riviera Beach, I probably built over forty houses thirty-some years ago, here.
I have no other questions.
Any other members? Any other members wishing to question or comment? Here none. Is there a motion to approve the site plan application as presented? I'm sorry, not site plan, special exception application. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Ms. Jackson. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved by Ms. Jackson, seconded by Mr. Canooty. Mr. Velasquez, you can call the roll, please.
Kimberly Jackson?
Yes.
Brian Colton?
Yes.
Julius Wiggum?
Yes.
Marie Davis?
Yes.
Chushet Brooks?
Yes.
Edward Kennedy?
Yes.
Roger McCallay?
Yes.
Daniel Spolting, I'm sure he's approved.
Can I make a comment?
Mrs. Davis should acknowledge.
Just, um, wanted to say that I think what you're doing is very noble, and I usually am very much opposed to, um, special exceptions, because I believe that if you grant too many, you don't really have a zoning code. But I think in this case, given the location and what you're attempting to do, um, will enhance people in your neighborhood and in the city as a whole, and thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I would also like to thank the applicant, the company of the city of Riviera Beach, who brought that package. Thanks very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Moving on to the next item.
Moving along, under new business, letter C. Special exception number fourteen oh-three, site plan fourteen dash twelve, and plat fourteen dash one. Site plan, special exception, and plat application, in the two remaining, with three buildings. Seven thousand four hundred and fifty-three square foot retail building. Twenty-one hundred square foot restaurant with drive-through. And forty-four hundred square foot retail building. For the parcel currently identified by PCM fifty-six, forty-three, thirty-two, thirty, twenty, zero, zero, one, zero, zero, one, zero. Located on the north side of Blue Heron Boulevard, east of Congress Avenue, and west of Avenue. Once again, Mari Velasquez, senior planner. Item number, well, parallel, the agenda. As you can see, we have the site plan, number fourteen twelve. We have a special exception, fourteen oh-three, and we have a plat application, fourteen oh-one. One applicant, three different applications. What's really happening is that we have this person applying for a commercial project consisting of three buildings. Two retail buildings and one restaurant we drive through. The plat application is to have the site divided into three different parcels, because of the user they wanna do. The site plan application is because they wanna develop it, they wanna build it, this, this is actually a undeveloped land. And the special exception is required because one of the uses that they're proposing, which is the restaurant with the drive-through, requires a special exception. So, I see it fit that to present the three applications under one presentation, since it's all the same item. Again, we'll go over the location, uh, give them your answer, what the proposed area is. We'll review the staff analysis and go over the special exception analysis. As you can see on the screen, the, the red square, uh, showing the proposed location is east of Congress on the north side of Blue Heron Boulevard, as we zoom in, you can see, uh, the red box will be more clear. And we can get more detail on the location, still east of Congress, west of Avenue Mass, on the north side of Blue Heron Boulevard. And on the screen, you can see what's currently the front portion of the property. Undeveloped land, doesn't have an address. It is identified with parcel control number fifty-six, forty-three, forty-two, thirty, twenty, zero, zero, one, zero, zero, ten. This site is approximately two point nine-six acres, and this currently is general commercial, which is a handy, this is commercial. On the screen, you can see, uh, properties to the east and the west. West of it is a vacant lot. East of it is a single-family residential structure. The south side properties, uh, south side properties, uh, is pretty, pretty big, and it's a community facility, it's actually a school. And that's on the screen, it's working, proposed, but they have, and that's the site plan. Those are the three buildings. These is the landscape plan, so you can get an idea of what, what it would look like. They have a close look at landscaping for the entire site. And as you can see, the perimeter is pretty well landscaped. Some elevations, this is a good idea, what the building would look like. Uh, for staff analysis, the applicant is proposing a two-point-nine-six acre commercial project consisting of three buildings. A seven thousand four hundred and fifty-three square foot retail building, a twenty-one hundred square foot restaurant with drive-through, and a forty-four hundred square foot retail building. Most uses comply with the city's land development regulations for general commercial, CT, planning district, provided that a special exception approval is granted by the city council for the restaurant with, with the drive-through. The proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plans, commercial future land use designation. Also, the proposed project is compatible with the surrounding parcels and uses. City services such as roads, water, sewer, and garbage collection are currently available to the site. And will be available for development. The proposed landscape plan is compatible with the city's land development regulations. Adequate parking has been proposed in accordance with the city's land development regulations. Going through the special exception analysis, there's ingres two and an ingres from the side. They are available directly off of Blue Heron Boulevard. There's also an access drive that will be available for access and traffic flow among the properties west of the proposed development, which is of similar use, retail. Off-street parking and loading areas, adequate ten-by-twenty parking spaces with wheel stops have been proposed in accordance with the city's land development regulations. Refuse in service areas, uh, six, a six-foot high-measuring enclosure has been proposed for each building to hold a dumpster, to hold dumpsters for, for onsite garbage collection. The utilities are currently available to the site and will be properly connected, as regulated by the Italy district. For screening buffering and landscaping, adequate landscaping has been proposed, which must be maintained according to the city's land development regulations. A six-foot high-measuring wall is already installed on the neighborhood located northwest of the site to provide adequate buffering. So, commercial, when commercial's next to residential, there's a six-foot measuring wall required to separate the utilities, provides some buffering. On this specific side, the neighborhood northwest of it already has it, but there's also residential on the east side. So that's where, uh, the six-foot, uh, high-measuring wall will be installed along the east, the east side of the property to provide adequate buffering from the adjacent residential properties. For signs and outside displays, uh, one monumental sign, up to forty-two square feet, will be allowed to be installed on each, uh, the properties on the south side along Blue Heron Boulevard, within private property. Wall signs will be allowed to be installed on the building sets, also being regulated by the sign regulation. Require, require yards and office spaces, adequate yard and office space has been proposed in accordance with the city's land development reg- regulations, and that's pretty much making sure that they comply with the previous and previous area, the buffering requires, and all between area that they're supposed to do. Staff recommends approval from the application for site plan, special exception, and plat for the two-point-nine-six acre commercial project consisting of three buildings. A seven four, a seven thousand four hundred and fifty-three square foot retail building, a twenty-one hundred square foot restaurant with drive-through, and a forty-four hundred square foot retail building with the following conditions. Number one, a two-year landscaping performance bond, four-hundred-and-ten percent of the value of landscaping and irrigation shall be required for the certificate of occupancy issued by the building official. Number two, construction must be initiated within eighteen months of the effective date of this resolution in accordance with section thirty-one dash sixty of the city code of ordinances. Number three, all future advertisements must be, once the state of the development is located in the city of Riviera Beach, fees and penalties in accordance with city code, section thirty-one, five-five-four, will be levied against the property owner and our business for violations of this section. For this project, the applicant is present as well, if you have any questions.
Members, any questions of Mr. Velasquez?
Yes, I have a question.
Mrs. Davis.
Uh, could you show us where the dumpsters are? Are they in public view?
Let me pull up the site plan. So, this is Blue Heron, this is Blue Heron Boulevard from the south side of the property. That's the, that's one of the dumpster enclosures, the ones back here. Pretty much, they're, they're all on the north side of the property. Really far away from the public, uh, point of view.
My second question is, um, I noticed through here, throughout, it, um, various departments, various departments made recommendations, and it just says noted, comment noted, comment noted. What does that really mean?
Can you be more specific?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, what we usually do, when there's a, there's a recommendation that doesn't need to be changed, or that does not require an answer, the, the applicant, we usually have the applicant provide it noted, the way it is on the record that they have acknowledged that.
So if the police department has a recommendation, it doesn't have to be, um, it only has to be noted they made the recommendation, and the recommendation is just that, it doesn't get followed, right?
It really depends on the specific item. Sometimes it is a comment that would be reflected on the actual building plan. So at this phase, it may not actually be a site plan per se, but maybe a, a building code element. There could be other just suggestions that are made by departments that are just suggestions, and there may not be actually a city code or an ordinance that would require a developer to do this. So, there is some flexibility. I can say that personally, when I review a site plan, sometimes I'll have an idea that I might offer to a developer, but it may not be a specific code section that they're required to follow.
Let me just ask you this, it says, with regard to the Riviera Beach Police Department, there are recommendations from Vanessa Snow, it's recommended a climb-resistant fencing or a noise-reduction wall be utilized to separate the shopping center from the residential, blah, blah, blah. So all of these things, all these recommendations that she made, uh, well, some of them anyway, they've just been acknowledged, but if, if a police department makes a recommendation, and then, and they do that for the benefit of, of safety, for safety of the community, and then the applicant doesn't follow that, isn't that not so good for the rest of us?
Yeah, there, there'll be, for example, code enforcement, the police department will offer, um, a SEPTED or crime prevention review of, of property, and they can make suggestions for improving the safety of a property. However, there may not be a specific code requirement that says the property owner is, is bound by this requirement. So, typically, from my experience, if it's something that isn't really, um, an economic hardship for a developer, normally the comment is followed through on, so if it's a climb-resistant fence, um, you know, if they're already installing a fence, then it's just selecting the right one that's gonna be cost-effective for the project, so.
But it's never a condition of approval from?
Rarely, because it would be difficult to prohibit the developer from moving forward if there wasn't a specific code section that really required them to do whatever the, the proposal was.
Chair.
Mrs. Jackson. Go ahead, Ms. Jackson, you're acknowledged.
Okay, I have, uh, two questions. Um, the first one is, do we know what that proposed retail, uh, site is gonna be? I mean, is that gonna be like a convenience store, or shopping center, or?
An auto shop or something?
I see the one that says a Riley Auto Shop, and I have a question about that one as well, but the proposed retail space.
The, currently what's proposed, there is no end user for this building, for the east side building. But right now, they're proposing a Riley Auto Parts, which is allowed for the general commercial regulations. The Taco Bell is the restaurant with the drive-through, that's gonna trigger the special exception, the drive-through. And the third building, it's retail, it will be approved as retail, but there is no end user. However, when they come back to us, it has However, when they come back to us, it has to comply with the general commercial district.
Okay. The, my second question is for the O'Reilly Auto Parts store. How do they plan to enforce, you know, people not working on cars in front of the store?
Right now, the, the proposal is used for the retail sales of the auto parts. I personally have seen where you're talking about in different auto parts. It's something that we work with code enforcement, keep him up to date, you know, this is what's being approved, or this is what's being proposed for this location. And just having to check the area constantly.
I guess my question would be for the?
Developer, the applicant?
Yeah, the developers who could answer that question more specifically, because, you know, do they own other stores, auto stores, and how do they enforce that policy at those other stores?
In reality, that's really a code enforcement.
Well, I know code enforcement, but also the store has to be an active participant in helping to enforce that code enforcement, you know, all the time.
It could be something that the owner will have, the tenant of O'Reilly Auto Parts will have signs, no, onsite car repair or whatever will cover the entire repairing outside of this store.
Thank you.
Izuk?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
For the Taco Bell and the O'Reilly Auto Parts, we have a layout of how, where it's gonna be and how it's gonna be. But we don't have a blueprint yet as to see how the building itself is gonna be on the inside. Does that have any bearing on us tonight about our decision or is that gonna be done later or what?
I don't think so, or that will still be reviewed when they, if this was to be approved by city council, they will still have to apply for the building permit and that's when all those details will come in.
Thank you very much.
Do you require a traffic study when an applicant, or when the owner makes an application like this?
Sorry, yes.
Okay.
Now, would that change the ingress and egress onto Blue Heron? Because I, I don't think I can really see it from there. I guess I can. So you won't be able to go east, eastbound from leaving there? Well, evidently not, not, not from the, from the illustrations. But that, that again is a DOT decision?
Correct. They, this driveway is proposed, or it still has to be approved by DOT, which the applicant is under the correct procedures. They have free approval that from DOT, and I believe it is a pass.
Is there any other questions? Any other questions of Mr. Velasquez? Are there any questions of the applicant?
You did not have to do public comments, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Grover Hall, Grover Hall, excuse me. Come on up to the microphone there.
Good afternoon. My name is Grover Hall, and I live at 16, I live at 1695 South 13th Court. I'm looking to plan on pulling this building. It's just aisles between us and the bigger support builder. And I want to know what kind of effect it have on us when you start cleaning it up. Because house or ladder pushes, this is a wall coming out there. We'll just stop before get our house. And from there, it's nothing but bushes. I want to know what effect it has when the danger appear. Look right out of my house, and trees and, and it's rough right now. Dangerous, very dangerous. I wish you'd come and take a look and you could see what I'm talking about.
Thank you. Perhaps, is that something that the applicant is responsible for? Is that an easement or right-of-way? What, what is the area?
I think that I can respond to it.
Okay.
Mr. Hall and I talked for, for a brief moment prior to his public comments. He's located just east of the proposed development area.
Okay.
Do you have a location map, do you remember that? I saved mine for you, your location map.
Is that Stroger?
So he's located just east of the development area, and currently the entire lot is desperate. So Mr. Hall lives in this neighborhood. And as you can see, the entire area is overgrown, there's a lot of invasive species. Not so long ago, the same overgrowth existed in back of Walgreens and some of the other retail uses until code enforcement had to clean it up. There was issues with vagrancy and other unwanted things occurring here. So the impact of the development of this parcel would result in almost all the vegetation to be removed, which mostly is invasive. There would be a wall that's required in between the residential area and the commercial use area. So there would be a six-foot masonry wall. And additionally, there's a landscape buffer that's required. So it would be maintained, the site would be maintained by the property owners. The wall would be installed, so the site would be secure, and that vagrance issue would be eliminated from, from this site. There is a site located to the north, which is a separate parcel, and I believe it's actually associated with the development to the north as well. So this, this tract of land would not be impacted, but the development site on this location would result in, as I said, a new wall and new landscape improvements.
I have a question.
Mr. Wiggum?
Oh, oh, the, the right here, all those are homes, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All those people were notified about the development?
Yeah, we, we provided a public notification for 500 feet.
So they were notified?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You mean, what do you mean a public, public notification? Does that mean a letter or just published in the paper?
Uh, it, both, actually. It was notified in Palmage Post, and then hard copy mailouts of tonight's meeting were sent out to the residents.
So I hope that provides some comfort, Mr. Hall. Mr. Canuti, you had a question?
Yeah, the question about the east side fence. The east side fence just runs down the east side of the property. The wall. Now, you refer to a wall to the northwest. Is that the wall that's over by, what is that, Wed, Wedgewood?
Wedgewood.
So?
Did you refer to the wall?
Yeah.
That's a really bad line, I'm gonna have to say. So, so there's an existing wall on the other parcel, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, so the parcel to the north, which is different ownership, does have an existing wall. But that, again, that's, that's off, off of this site and outside of the, the scope of this project as well.
Okay, but the other wall is just going down the east side?
Our, our code requirements state that if there is abutting uses of residential and commercial, that the new commercial development is required to install a six-foot concrete wall to provide a component of additional buffering, and then there's also landscape requirements as well.
No other questions?
Any other members?
Yeah, I have one more thing. I think Mr. Hall indicated that that, I think he said that's a real rough area. Is he talking about, is that what I heard him say? Or is it a high crime area? No? I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Okay.
What you were saying was a rough area, is that the overgrowth of vegetation? Or are there other elements that you're referring to? So the maintenance issue, yeah, so it's not really luck at what it is?
So it's mainly some vegetation.
Mrs. Davis?
Okay. Is there any way to compel the owner of that to clean it up and take away the invasive species?
Owner of?
Of the property behind, I think?
To the property's north?
Yes.
Uh, it would have to be through a code enforcement action, so potentially, yes.
Thank you.
But, but is, because I, I thought there was an easement behind there. Isn't that an easement where the city owns that?
It's a public right-of-way east of the property on, that, where they're proposing the development, not to the north.
Right to the east of it, where the, I, I guess where the red line is to the right.
Yeah, Chairperson, but you're correct. There is, in this area here, there's a separation in between the property line and then the property line of the residences. It's not the width of a full right-of-way, it's probably about 25, 30 feet. But there is a city right-of-way through this area that runs north and south. So you are correct.
Okay, great. Any other questions? We have questions of the applicant. No members choosing to ask applicant any questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the project if submitted.
Properly moved and seconded. Are there any other concerns or questions? Hearing none, Mr. Velasquez. Did you have something, Mr. Wiggum?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
Kimberly Jackson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, before we proceed, can you, just like, can you read the title of the item? Just here on the record, please?
I have so many papers here. Um, let's see. Review of, oh, yes. Review of SE, SE 1403, SP 1412, PA 1401, a site plan, special exception, and flat application from Mr. Nathan Landers for three buildings. A 7,453 square feet retail, retail building, a 2,100 square foot restaurant with drive-through, and a 4,400 square foot retail building for the, for, for the parcel currently identified as property control number 56434230200010010, located on the north side of Blue Heron Boulevard, east of Congress Avenue and west of Avenue S.
It's been moved. Mr. Canuti, you want to renew your second?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't.
Ms. Jackson, properly moved and seconded.
Kimberly Jackson?
Yes.
Brian Colton?
Yes.
Julius Wiggum?
Yes.
Marie Davis?
Yes.
Michelle Bruce? Ms. Burke, just after another moment. Edward Navee?
Yes.
Frederick McCollough?
Yes.
Yanni Mosvovin, motion approved.
Thank you for the, for the, for the projects. Thank you.
My apologies, I lost my agenda and my stack of papers here. Can we move to the next item?
Yeah, and, and also just for the record, Ms. Burke's due to leave tonight at approximately 8:27.
General discussion, we have no public comments. Do we have any correspondence?
No, sir.
Planning and zoning board member comments. Any comments for members?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Do you know when the coastal, coastal, oh, sorry, I shouldn't give you the name of it?
Setback?
Yes, is coming to us. Do you have any idea?
Very soon.
Do you think that we could have an educational review first, maybe with Mr. Bates? Coastal, I mean, it's a pretty, it, it impacts everyone, everyone's future. You know, the city of Riviera Beach's future, coastal construction line.
Right. I, I can make a request, but I can't guarantee what the outcome will be.
Okay, could you do that?
Yes.
I think it'd be beneficial since it's such an important project. And what's the, what's the status of the amulet?
Um, the amulet?
I didn't see it on here.
That's because it was now submitted, one, two, three, four, five, the fifth item down, SP 14-08, the Wellness Resort and Spa. That's the new name for the old amulet. So that's the same parcel, 3100 North Ocean Drive.
Are these in order of, are these in any chronological order when they're expected?
I believe I put them on the list in application number order. So the first four are in chronological order of special exception number for, for staff. So 1307 means the 13th special exception application, excuse me, the, the seventh application in 2013. Going down the list, the second special exception application for 2014, and so on and so forth. And then the site plan applications are listed in the same order.
But you don't have the coastal construction on here?
Uh, it is at the bottom, there's three hollow bullet points, and it is the second bullet point.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, um, thank you. That's, that's, that's great. I appreciate the updated list here so we can kind of have an idea. Mr. Canuti?
Yeah, just a quick, what's the progress on that last restaurant side at Ocean Mall? Or is there any progress?
Excellent question. The information that I was previously provided would have made me believe that construction would have started already, and I don't believe that's the case. I know that the construction fence is up, and that would have been underway, so I.
Kind of half of. Any other comments? Any other comments before we adjourn? Any other updates, Mr. Gang?
No, just wanted to touch upon the fact that the, about staff lists, projects, it's not supposed to be 100% complete, but maybe other projects we're working on that use of the main points. I know the board's requested that for you to see, so I just wanted to keep you guys informed.
Sounds great. Move to adjourn?
Second. I want to pose.
All right, have a good one.